So we can call this meeting to order. Can I get a motion to open up the October 1th Sag Harbor Board of Education meeting?
So moved.
Second.
And a second, all those in favor?
All right.
We, um...
We do I here?
Victoria is out tonight, so we have a guest district clerk, Jean de Santa, thank you. She will be popping up our motions for us tonight, so we will await until the motion. Oh, I see it there.
Okay, I must be doing something wrong.
Nope, just, are you in?
Yeah, it says I'm in.
Yeah, I didn't see the motion pop up on white screen either.
Oh, okay, okay. The people are doing stuff.
There we go.
Yep, there we go.
Oh, here, okay, okay.
So cast your ballot. We have a quorum, so we can get the meeting started. We also have a student representative here, I see, could you introduce yourself?
This is the president of our student council, Kelly Consella, and we'd like to welcome her, but I also want you to know that she comes with a lot more experience than we are. Her mind was an awesome board member, and she was on for a number of years, and so I'm sure she heard some dinnertime complaints about how much work it takes to be on a board. So I told her she doesn't have to take any homework home with her, but we do want to hear her voice, and I don't know if any of the other board members want to encourage her in that, that we had a lively conversation about wanting to hear a student's voice. Kelly will be, Kelly, you're going to be one of three other of your executives, right? That'll take turns.
Yeah, there's also, my vice president is Graham Di Lorenzo, my secretary is Phoebe Miller, and the treasurer is Riley Rose.
Great, so...
Excellent, welcome.
Welcome, and as you know, we use Robert's Rules during our meetings, so if you have anything you want to say at any point, just kind of like wave to me, and I will make sure you get to say what you need to say. Thanks for joining us. We're going to hold off the Pledge of Allegiance until after a proposed executive session. Would someone like to make a motion to convene into executive session to discuss the employment of a particular person with our school attorney?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
And you'll roll, please. Has anyone seen the vote pop up?
While we're waiting for the vote, I just want to say how fabulous it was to go through the materials on Board Docs. I've seen the light.
It makes a little louder.
It was much easier. Boom, 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 like, progress. I might just change my vote on something tonight just to see how it works.
Well, why don't you wait till Victoria's here?
It's just a fun new toy. You gotta play around a little bit.
Okay, everyone's entered their votes?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, unanimous, we will be going into executive session for fifteen minutes? Hopefully. We'll be back, executive session.
Oh, I need to go, sorry.
Oh.
Am I in the system yet, sir? But I'll do a verbal, it's fine if you get out.
All right, while Chris is getting on, should we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Hi, Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Chris, are you in?
Hmm?
Oh, great, okay.
I'll put this before I go.
Perfect, so we are ready to move into public input one. Anybody here like to speak for public input one? Please come on up. As you know, the rules for public comment are issued on the website, but I will remind you to give us your name, remember that you are being filmed, and also, you look gorgeous. And also, please don't use specific names of faculty or students.
Okay, my name is Sharon Bada, and I'm here tonight to ask some questions about transportation for non-public schools, such as already at the Hamptons, the Ross School, Hay Graham School, and Green School. I understand that Sagaponic is exempt because they have some other type of contract with the district. I have been researching the New York State manual for non-public schools, and based on the schedule...
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you. There should be a timer for three minutes that should be showing up, so you will be able to see how much time you have left. It should, it should pop up right on the screen. Everything's on the screen these days.
There we go.
So, my question is, there's approximately, based on my research, four days that non-public schools in this district require transportation, okay? And it's supposed to be negotiated with the administrators or the authorities in the district, and the administrators and authorities in the non-public school systems. I guess I want to know if there's any difficulty with any of those schools that are exempt on the days that you are closed. I'd like to know if there's a problem negotiating transportation for all students. We're all taxpayers, we all pay for this service, there's approximately fifteen children I've been able to earmark that don't get transportation on the days that you're closed, and those parents have to drive morning and afternoons to drop off their children and pick them back up. In addition, most of those people are working people, they have to either be late to work or find somebody else to bring their child, and as a taxpayer, it's very inconvenient.
Thank you so much for bringing that to our attention.
Okay, thank you.
Can you leave your information with, when, just before you leave, just your phone number and everything, so I can get back to you?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
I have a copy of everything.
That'd be great, because that one I won't be able to do off the top of my head.
Thank you, so just to clarify, she's looking for information regarding the four days that were closed, which means transportation for private schools to our open. Thank you very much. Anyone else here to speak pursuant to public input number one? No one? Okay, then let's move on. Oh, this is me. President's comments and announcements. Let's see. Oh, concerning some policy, I believe I did send out an email that we received guidance from our attorneys regarding the code of conduct for officers and employees. We have received his advice to adopt a new single policy, and Diana and I are going to be working on this, and hopefully we will have a draft for the next meeting. Also, a reminder on the, oh, just to update a couple board members, the residency policy that we worked on so hard over the summer and could not come to a conclusion on our own has been sent to the policy committee, and I'm recommending that it be considered on a coordinated basis. Other than that...
Can I inquire about that?
Sure.
If it's being put to the policy committee, can we please create timelines of time and expectations of when looking back to us, because last spring we said we would have that nailed before school started, it's now October, and I remember when we were talking about it, we couldn't come to an agreement, we only had, I think, four or five board members, so if we have a meeting where everybody attends, we might have no success of at least getting four people to agree to something. But we had committed to the public that that would have been done by, before school started, and I'm just getting increasingly uncomfortable that we're not attending to a coordinated basis.
No, I agree with Chris Tyson's comment. The policy committee, if we can get an update as to when they are meeting, if it's not planned yet, just let us know, and then we can hopefully map out a timeline, is there Diana here on the policy committee?
Apparently, I wouldn't try if we've actually finalized all the meetings and who decides when the meetings are happening, but I'm happy to tell whoever, you know, trying to set a timeline.
Okay, we will work on that timeline during this week. At this point, we can move on into the superintendent's report.
I'm sorry, can I make one comment? I just want to thank Kelly Consella, who is our high school representative at the meeting, it's the first time we've had one of our students...
Yes, we introduced her at the beginning.
But now that we're back and everybody's here, I just want to say thank you. It's great to have you here. Sorry you had to wait.
Never thought I'd be that grown up, did you, Mr. Malone? I'll put this up every time, this is becoming my new mission statement. All right, this is going to be a little small, and my glasses are not as strong. I added a few additional slides, because we try and share this with the board ahead of time. We contract with the Western Suffolk Bosse's every year, and I think it began with our former business administrator, because we were looking at district-wide accountability. So we wanted to look, because we had a lot of people saying, you know, kind of the sky is falling, that, you know, our enrollment is going to be plummeting, because if you look in New York State, the enrollment is plummeting, the sky is falling, and if you look even at Nassau and Suffolk County, which is what you're looking at, and it might be easier to look at with your sheets, over the last, I'm going to have to look from night, starting, this graph starts in 1996 and goes till 2016, we have seen a dramatic decrease in the number of births in both New York State and in Nassau and Suffolk County. So that results directly in the number of students that will be attending school. So this was, I apologize, I didn't get to this to the board, because I, when I went and looked at last year's presentation, I was like, where did I get all those great statistics from? And so I called Western Suffolk's, and they were good enough to email the report to me. I'm not sure where it went. So this figure number two shows the births in Nassau County decreased births in East Hampton and Southampton, and it shows Sag Harbor. Births within Sag Harbor School District peaked in 2003, with 74 births recorded that year. Since then, the number of births have fluctuated between 46 and 69. Most recently, the births have ranged between 46 and 54, and if you look, it stays very consistent. So in the last few years, it's been 53, 54, 46, 46, but it is down from that larger threshold that you were seeing, and it is, we're seeing the same reflection in East Hampton and Southampton.
Katie, I'm sorry, is that, so are those numbers representing births?
Births.
Okay.
So the first two slides are about births, but we know that directly relates to students. There is, I'll go a little bit closer, because I'm going broad, so stay with me.
I'm only asking, because we know a lot of families move out here when their kids are a little older, you know, where you go to school.
Yeah, I'm going to, hopefully I'll get to those points, too, but this is, this is a trend that directly impacts schools. This is not a perfect study. For example, we talked today, and I told them that we have another school district that now has a choice, so Sagaponic now has choice, so that's going to make a difference. So then, we have the home sales in Sag Harbor, and this is, I think they did a really nice job with this, because they show from 2006 to 2016, starting with the number of houses sold, and the median price for those houses, through to, and if you see, it goes up a lot. You're going from in 2006, 158 sales, to a low in 2008, or 2009, a 77 houses sold, to a robust 2016 with 236 houses. However, the percentage of vacant homes in the district has grown in recent years, which, that indicates that could have an impact on our enrollment, and that's reflected when you see the enrollment projections they make for us.
Okay, I have a question.
Sure.
Can you define vacant a little better for us? Does that mean the summer people?
Yeah, second home. Second home. No, you're saying second home.
I just want a point of information here, we want to follow Robert's Rules, and let's kind of just wait until she finishes that section, and then we can throw questions out.
That would be great. So in 2015, 48.6% of the total housing was occupied, so occupied means they lived there year-round, and 51.4% was vacant, or they only lived there part of the year. So where, it's where they pay their taxes, so that's the threshold for, when they refer to as a vacant house, it's where they pay their, you know, property taxes, they pay their property taxes and both, but where they take it off their taxes. So that, a second home, you don't have that opportunity, so they claim that to be their primary housing, so in 54, 51.4% were their second home, or their third home, or their fourth home. The median sale price has also increased to historical high in 2016 of 1.24 million. Or 1.24. This is our district enrollment going back through the years. Sag Harbor School District educates pre-K and within grades K through 12 in their two schools, and this shows going back to, or this is what they're projecting going forward, from 2017 to 2027, they're seeing our enrollment roughly go down by about 150 students, starting from 2017 and going forward. They see actually a peak in our enrollment for this year, and then the progression. Now, how did they get those ideas from? That consists of, first, here's, the losses are forecasted in nine of the next 10 years, leading to 2027, an enrollment of 804 students. This represents a decrease of 148 students, or 15.5% when compared to the current enrollment. They gave four indicators why they think that's going to happen. First, the kindergarten enrolled 54 to 84 students, so whenever you're leaving classes higher, and you're enrolling classes lower, then you know to project that your enrollment is going to go down. This year, in 2017, the kindergarten enrollment was one of the lowest that Sag Harbor had ever seen historically, but did coincide with the number of births as well, and they really did believe, when you read all of the, everything they wrote, that that was truly a blip, that that historical number we're probably not going to see again, that they think the kindergarten enrollment is going to stay pretty consistent, but drop down. Kindergarten enrollment is expected to range from 54 to 59 students per year between 2018 and 2026. Second, incoming kindergarten class, and the graduating hook break class, I'm repeating myself here, in the previous eight, eight of the last 10 years, has been smaller than the graduating class that's leaving. If this trend is projected to continue, so you're going to see a loss of between four and 32 students per year in the next 10 years. Although, I'm going to interject here, what this trend does not show is the students that, we all have the number on the last slide, is new number of students from Sagaponic or Wayne Scott that are choosing to send their students here versus East Hampton. So we have to start putting that formulaically into the pattern that we're looking at. So they have been very close, I'll show you how right they've been in the last few years on their projections, but I think that that's a piece that they're going to have to take a look at. On average, the migration ratios continue to show year-to-year fluctuations. This year's gains were noted in transition years, second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and 12th, where there were losses in the years 1, 5, 8, 9, 10, and 11. I have to always hesitate a little, because our class size is so small, it's really so small, like, you know, having worked in great big districts, I don't know about the patterns for that. Fourth, the average grade level size increased in grades 2 to 8 and 12 during 2012 to 2017 compared to 2007 to 2012. Grade size decreases are anticipated in K through 6 and 12 during 2017 to 2022. Now, how accurate are their measurements? Well, if you take the 2017 actual versus the projected, they were terribly wrong in kindergarten, and they were terribly wrong in a few other grade levels, but if you look net overall, they tend to be fairly accurate in their, so overall, they were only off by seven. I love this stuff, by the way. You can have me do this all day.
Do these numbers include tuition, or no?
Yes.
It did?
Yes, yes, it did, but they weren't tracking for tuition.
I know, that's why I'm saying...
So, because they, just, all they do is look at our enrollment from the beds forms. So this is our current enrollment, and we did drop, we went, but we, if you look, we, and again, remember we had that little tiny class, kindergarten class, so if you were to almost take that out of the equation and look back on 2016 to 2017, our numbers were one, remember, as board members, you don't look at the total at the bottom, because New York State does not recognize the enrollment of pre-K. We have a robust pre-K program, but New York State does not look at pre-K, so they only look at kindergarten. So we went from in 2016, 17, 942 on bed stay. Oh, you know what, I didn't put the right number in there. So in 2018, we were 951, I made a mistake. And then this year, our official bed stay is October 4th, but I thought we were pretty close, and I didn't want you to have to wait for all this information until the end of October, so I went ahead and gave it to you now. Now, if you look down at the bottom, I gave you the 2000, and we have a very robust pre-K. Pre-K went from 27 to 36 to 39. So last year and this year, we had three sections of pre-K. My predictor is that with daycare being provided to round out a child's day, we'll have a half day of pre-K, but then the rest of the day we'll have daycare, where the child can walk across the hallway, I anticipate those numbers are going to go up. And it just makes sense, because we do know that parents don't send their children to pre-K here because they don't have someone to come pick them up or drop them off. That is a challenge. Then, you asked about the 2017, Sagaponic was sending us 10, they're now sending us eight. Wayne Scott was sending us 13, they're now sending us 23. Amencant's is still sending us one. And the parental tuitioning in went up from 14 to 23, parents that made that decision to pay. So the class sizes stayed fairly consistent. We saw a fairly robust increase across most grade levels, and the kindergarten, I think the elementary saw was most of our tuitioning in, of our parents, so, yeah, how are we doing? Good?
Sounds good to me.
So I think that, again, I think that the trending that you're seeing from, they have been accurate, Western Suffolk's really good, they look at, if you, I sent the whole email to the board, I will make, put it on the district website, also put it on Board Docs, but they look at building starts, they look at the houses sold, they had to make, when they put in the watch case factory, they actually thought families might be moving in there. I think, I think Chris Tyson and I might have had the conversation the very first year I was here, and she was like, they're wrong! And you were right.
When it went back, it was $3.5 million, not many families.
Yeah, so they were thinking that those were going to be families, but they do look at housing starts, they look at live births, they look at all these kinds of interesting factors, so you have that for happy reading. Is there any questions on this? I think you're looking at very good news. I think that we are looking at our enrollment holding steady. I do not think it's going to go down as low as they think when they bring all the factors in.
If you have questions on this, is it time?
Yeah, I could...
Okay, yeah, just a quick question. It looks like our numbers are holding relatively steady because we've increased our tuition to students. If for some reason that those arrangements changed, then we will see a contraction, correct?
Yes.
Based on, based on what we know today?
Yeah, you, Wayne Scott started sending to us, this is their fourth year?
Right. I mean, we don't anticipate those being a change, but...
Well, we now also provide their transportation, so it makes it much easier for them to be able to provide choice.
They're just looking at the tuition for 2017 was 38, and then 2018's 55, so that's a big difference.
Do you put that to me?
Where are you looking?
2017 totals, when you add Sagaponic, Wayne Scott, Amencant, and parental tuition, that, those are all the students that we get tuition from outside the district.
Yeah.
So we went from 38 last year, is 2018 the beginning of the school year of 2018?
Yeah, yeah.
So, right, last year was 38, this year's 55, so that's a nice one.
Yeah, yeah. These numbers could change very subtly, because bed stay is officially October 4th, but again, I didn't want to analyze this at the end of the month, you know, I just thought, let's get, let's get this in, so, right.
Great, do you have any other questions regarding enrollment?
The other item that's on the board agenda, and this is the exact slide from last year, oh, I also wanted to, wait, I want to add something that you should, the board should be looking for, is we are adding to the board docs the goals, so I put it in written form, but we've actually migrated the board goals, so those are appearing for the board on there, and so this one meets district-wide accountability, because I really do think that we see things like tuition, now, East Hampton's an outstanding school, and I think they do a brilliant, brilliant job, but whenever we give people choice, they make choices, right? So they, these districts have given choices, but I think that does resonate with our accountability, and we are keeping track. So if you notice, we're going to put these little boxes in, along with putting it with the board docs relating it to. You didn't do, no I did this much talking at night as well as during the day, did you? I think I'll have to say during the day. So educational board goals 1 through 4, because if we don't talk about our goals, and we don't get our goals out there, then we don't make that kind of movement. So last year, we made a shift, and we went to, we went to having our district clerk go to being a full-time employee and directing our three building-level communication coordinators, and we took that out of the line that we were going to use for communication consultants. And a little, part one of that is that you can, if you hire a communication coordinator or consultant, that title is owned by civil service, and we would have to hire somebody off a civil service list. Even though we have really creative, fabulous people, they could do that job here in Sag Harbor and be wonderful communicators, we actually have to follow the civil service list. There is one exception, if you hire, if you hire somebody working under 17 hours a week in that capacity, you don't have to hire off a civil service list. So we thought this was a great opportunity to use our district clerk, who sits here and listens to, you know, at least twice a month, what are our board goals, what are our initiatives, what is everybody working towards, what are the events that have happened, what are the events that are going to happen, and can work with our three building-level communication reps, one in the elementary, one in the middle school, and one in the high school, to work collaboratively with them and say, hey, I know these goals so well, I know that that's something that the board would really want that communicated to the community. Like, we're going to have presentations tonight on the Rave app, which is a safety communication device. We're going to talk about the Sandy Hook Promise. A person sitting here can then bring that information back with her team of building-level communicators and say, this is a really important initiative, and we need to make sure we're tracking it, and we're communicating it out to not just our children and our school, but also our school community, our residents, and also to our neighbors in Suffolk County, because both those initiatives are happening Suffolk County-wide. Also, so the district clerk was closely with the board, and then the step two is, each building have, now has a communication coordinator, and each of the buildings has a person to coordinate and gather, things like, everyone's taking pictures, I don't know if you ever noticed, but I, like, I do it in middle school, high school, I have pictures, our athletic director, Coach Bramhoff, has pictures from both the elementary and the high school. We have parents that are wonderful about sharing, our PTA, our PTSA takes pictures. So to gather those pictures, gather that information, we have a syntax rep that will create any press release we ask them to, because I know I don't have time to sit down and write a press release, so that you just need to get the who, the what, the where to those syntax reps, so that they can, they know where to be to create that story. They will be in the district a minimum of five times a month, and so they came, it was our communication reps that told them, you have to be at the first day of school, it's the greatest. You have to be at the welcome back barbecue, it's the greatest. You have to go on Saturday morning to our homecoming event, you get a picture of the superintendent in our 1960 Cadillac taking the king and queen, no, but get pictures of all the skits and all the really fun, energetic activity. I have to quote Eric Bramhoff, our athletic director, who says he's an athletic director in a performing arts school, because that was absolutely a performing arts event at that homecoming. He's like, does anybody stand for a game? Because we had... Because we had legions of people out for the, um, for the homecoming. So, these people will do, will make sure, also they put up, oh, and this has not happened yet and I apologize for that, because we, we didn't do this in the spring because we knew we were going with a new website and a new online app that we could do live feeds. And we're all being trained in those live feeds and I'm tremendously happy with those and they all go to Twitter, they'll go to Instagram and that's gonna be part of, um, the work that we're gonna be training and learning about. So, we didn't wanna start something that looked one-way last year and was gonna look tremendously different this year. And they're also, um, they're also, the job is every week to put up, "Here's what's coming up for the next two weeks." So, parents that are so busy can have a really close lens of what's happening in the elementary, the middle school and the high school for the next two weeks coming up. And then, I think, I think that's everything. I hope that's everything. I'm sure you have questions for me.
Questions for the superintendent?
Well, is, um, is this presentation supposed to let us know what the goals and objectives are for those roles and what the benchmark of success is?
I'm gonna actually cut in at this point just because we don't have Victoria here tonight.
I'm gonna say something about the presentation Katie put together.
Yeah, I think that this, it was a, was a partial presentation and that Victoria, because she's been out, it will be having a more specific...
Yeah, um, I think, I think we can look at the, at the benchmarks, though, would be, are they getting out their things each week? Are we getting the communication coordinator in five days a week? Um, you know, I think that those are pretty simple benchmarks, you know? So, are we getting weekly, are we getting press releases out, you know, set communication? And the live feeds for every single, um, for, you know, what's happening for the next two weeks and then live feeds of what's happening in each of the buildings, because that's their responsibility.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
I'd rather, but when we vote on the position on this, let me choose that.
I get to stop. And I'm handing this over to our middle school principal and our elementary principal. Yeah, you're gonna, you, you're the little miss. Okay. She's gonna let you do this all by yourself, Mr. Malone. So, our elementary principal, Mr. Malone, will be doing, this is, this meets goal one, safety and wellness.
Okay, good evening, everybody. So, as Mrs. Graves said, the, um, first goal for the Board of Beds this year is to take a look at safety and wellness, a goal for the last few years and we made a goal very, very important to all of us here in the district, I think collectively, where we're always looking at what we do in the area of safety and wellness and how, how can we improve that. So, with that in mind, I, um, was given the opportunity to attend a presentation this summer. I went with, um, Mr. McLaughlin, Steven McLaughlin, who's a security and safety officer here in the district, and, um, learned about programs that are provided by the Sandy Hook Promise Organization. And if you're not familiar with the Sandy Hook Promise, it was a, a group that was formed after the, um, school shooting in 2012 in Newtown, Connecticut. Their, their mission and their, their laser focus is on reducing gun violence. That's, that's what they're committed to and they believe strongly in the idea that, that all gun violence, schools and outside of schools, can be prevented if people understand and know how to deal with the signs that, that are out there. So, um, in August, the, I'm pretty sure Sheriff Tulon was, he was elected, um, a year ago, newly-elected sheriff along with members of, um, the Suffolk County Government, various town governments, along with reps from the schools in Suffolk County, the Suffolk County Superintendent's Association president was there, many school superintendents were there. Um, Mrs. Graves let, let me represent Sand Harbor and members from Sandy Hook Promise were there to share information about, about their programs. We came across an, an overview video, which, I think, does a, it does a great job of explaining what Sandy Hook Promise is all about and talks about their initiatives and some of their accomplishments in, in recent years, so, so we'll share that.
Yeah, yeah.
December fourteenth, two thousand twelve, was a day our country will never forget. Twenty-six innocent lives lost to senseless, preventable gun violence, including educator Mary Sherlock and first graders Daniel Barton and Dylan Hockley. And what these families endured was felt by the entire nation.
I know there's not a parent in America who doesn't feel the same overwhelming grief that I do.
While the country was still reeling from heartbreak, several families came together with members from the community to create an organization committed to honoring the lives lost by protecting the lives of others. And on January fourteenth, two thousand thirteen, just a month after the shooting, they launched Sandy Hook Promise, turning their tragedy into a moment of transformation by promising real change to our country. And since that day, Sandy Hook Promise has helped intervene on hundreds of school shooting, suicide and firearm threats, as well as gotten help for thousands who are in need of mental health and wellness assistance. We have achieved this through our Know the Science programs, the passage of sensible school safety and gun violence prevention legislation, and with you, our incredibly committed base of millions of supporters who fight tirelessly every day to keep the promise. Here are some of the amazing accomplishments from the past five years that we and you have achieved. In two thousand thirteen, we first partnered with supporters in Congress to navigate the political waters of gun violence prevention. Although we failed to get the votes needed for universal background check, we did help pass legislation in four states and accelerate changes in five others. We also launched our Make the Promise media campaign to raise awareness on gun violence and engage Americans into the conversation by asking them to make the promise. Finally, we began comprehensive research to understand the causes, enablers and solutions to end gun violence. By the end of our first year, even through tears and grief, we established ourselves as an emerging leader in the gun violence prevention movement and attracted a base of over one hundred and eighty thousand supporters who shared our vision of change. The next year, we announced our core purpose, focusing on community-based prevention through training, education and awareness. We chose Ohio as our model state to launch and test our programs.
It's not about politics, it's about saving lives.
And in November, we launched Say Something, where we teach students how to recognize signals of violence on social media.
Kids have a powerful voice, they really do, and it's, it has to, and they're looking for it immediately because this is, this is their world.
We also launched our Promise Leader Initiative to train and develop community-based ambassadors to raise awareness, help promote our programs and advocate for policy. From child access prevention and mental health first aid legislation, to passing background checks in Washington and improving the NIC system, we kept a steady drumbeat on the passage of policy. To end the year, we launched our first PSA, Monsters Under the Bed, and our What They Left Behind documentary to begin changing the narrative on how to prevent gun violence. By the end of this second year, we had doubled our base to four hundred thousand supporters from every state and created a massive social media following. By two thousand fifteen, we trained over three hundred and fifty thousand youth and adults in over five hundred schools in our Know the Science Prevention programs. And we learned about the first major school shooting threat that our training helped stop. Demand for our Say Something and Start With Hello programs grew quickly.
There's three steps to remember. See someone alone, reach out and help, and then start with hello.
We also entered our first district-wide partnership with Miami-Dade County Public Schools, rolling out three of our Know the Science programs and continued to gain support from both sides of the aisle for our Mental Health Reform Act. As our third year ended, our supporters and promise leaders had grown again and we began building a national network of trainers to deliver our programs. Two thousand sixteen was a major breakout year. We trained over a million youth and adults in our Know the Science programs and, very importantly, began delivering more and more interventions from school shooting, suicide and firearm threats, bullying and anger incidents. Two thousand sixteen was also the year of new connections and relationships, with starting our research program with the University of Michigan's Youth Violence Prevention Center, to partnering with Los Angeles Unified Public Schools, the nation's second-largest school district. But the culmination of it all was seeing our first successful passage of federal policy after three years of lobbying. It was an incredibly proud moment to see the Mental Health Reform Act signed into law. And to build off that great success, we launched one of the most successful PSAs ever.
Sandy Hook Promise has released now a powerful new video.
It's been viewed millions of times.
But the whole point is, there are signs to look out for.
As two thousand sixteen closed, we had grown to over one million supporters and two thousand promise leaders with seventy-five national trainers delivering our programs. In two thousand seventeen, our Know the Science programs expanded into over four thousand schools nationwide, with interventions increasing as more schools joined. The word was out that you could prevent gun violence if you knew the signs and Sandy Hook Promise had become a national leader in prevention. We also acquired Students Against Violence Everywhere, consisting of two thousand chapters in schools nationwide, empowering students to sustain our programs. Always striving to be better, we introduced our Say Something Anonymous reporting system, allowing youth to submit observed at-risk behaviors through a mobile app, website or twenty-four-seven crisis hotline. And created an interactive video training module, leveraging technology to reach more students. We championed extreme risk protection orders in several states and began to advocate for national mandates and funding for our prevention programs with Congress and released another successful PSA on Good Morning America.
I'm here at the scene of tomorrow's shooting, where a fifteen-year-old will kill four children, two adults, and then turn the gun on himself.
At the end of two thousand seventeen, our amazing supporter base was one-point-four million strong with two thousand four hundred promise leaders and had over one hundred trainers to support demand for our program. In two thousand eighteen, delivery of our programs has reached an incredible rate with over three-point-five million youth and adults trained. Our Say Something Anonymous reporting system is in high demand with nearly two hundred districts already signed up and several hundred more ready to go. In March two thousand eighteen, in another moment of great pride, legislation we drafted, the Stop School Violence Act, passed in Congress. We also gained White House and congressional support for states to pursue extreme risk protection order policy, which ties directly to our mission of teaching the signs and then having policy to support action on them.
By preventing these acts and you have the ability to do that, there's legislation available to you right now.
We're only halfway through two thousand eighteen and our impact and reach has been unprecedented. We have grown our supporter base to over two-point-eight million individuals, have almost six thousand promise leaders and have trained more than seven thousand schools in our Know the Science programs. In just five years, Sandy Hook Promise has grown to become a national leader in gun violence prevention. Our greatest accomplishment has been saving and intervening on countless lives by proving that gun violence is preventable when you know the signs. We thank you for joining this movement, being part of the change and, most importantly, saving lives.
It's too late for us to go back and save our children. But by taking our tragedy and transforming it into something positive that could save the lives of others and could even save the life of your family, that's what keeps us going every day.
Thank you, Mr. Malone, for bringing the board here. I knew it was gonna happen one day, I just didn't think it would be you.
Okay.
So, so this summer, when I attended the, the workshop up at, um, St. Joseph's College, that, the picture at the end or the, the clip at the end, those were the, the co-founders of Sandy Hook Promise. So, it was Mark Harden, who lost his son, Daniel, first grader, who presented in August. And the crux of the presentation was to share with educators and members of the law enforcement community these four programs that are under the umbrella of Know the Signs. And Sandy Hook Promise shares these programs with schools and communities throughout the country at no cost. So, all the materials that are needed along with any training that may be needed is provided at no cost. And as they mentioned and as the, you know, the, the numbers have shown, it's, it's spreading throughout the nation. So, what I'd like to briefly do tonight is just, just give you, um, an overview of those four components, because here in the district, we're looking at what Sandy Hook Promise offers and how these programs may interface with what we already do, how, how it may enhance what we do for, um, increasing safety and, and overall wellness in the community. The first one is a program called Start With Hello, um, focused on fostering the concept of looking out for one another and caring for, for one another in the, in the community. And very briefly and, you know, simply, but, but very important, it's, it's the idea that if you see someone alone, reach out and help them and just, just say hello. And what the program tries to get started in schools is focus on the lunch hour. And this is very similar to something that I know, um, here at Pearson, in the middle school and high school, the schools, the schools have done. But at, at the lunch hour and then it can move into other areas of the day or, um, other areas of the community, just, just reaching out to those who may be apart from the group and, and trying to get them to join in. And again, the, the training that they provide for something like this is, is provided through short videos, staff members can use that to get an understanding of the program and then share that with the students. And again, it's provided at no cost. The second program is, um, Say Something. This is an anonymous reporting system, but it also, um, ties in an education and awareness piece. And it's trying to help students understand and learn about the signs and signals of potential threats, specifically focusing with, um, middle school and high school students on detecting those through social media. Obviously, that's the vehicle which, with most, most students and children are using to communicate nowadays, so how can they pick up on some of the signs that they may see their friends posting? And, um, it's also then talking to them about how to take action in a safe way and reach out to adults that may help them. The, um, reporting system also provides a hot, a hotline twenty-four, twenty-four hours, seven days a week where somebody could make a call and get some support by, uh, either the web, an app or, or through a phone, phone call. And then they would direct them to the proper channels to, to hopefully help. Thirdly, the, um, the program's safety assessment and intervention. All these programs are evidence-based and research-based. This one was started by a psychologist out of the University of Virginia, Duke, for now. And this is a program designed to help the school teams, administrators, teachers, faculty members, coaches, members of the Board of Education, training us all to understand how to identify threats and some of the signs and signals of violence and then how, how to determine the seriousness of those signals. And then from there, develop intervention plans that can help these students and help keep everybody safer. And then lastly, is a program called SOS, which is the Signs of Su- Suicide. And this is, again, a curriculum focused on teaching students to recognize symptoms of depression and suicide in their friends, using the acronym ACT, which is to acknowledge that you may be seeing warning signs, to care enough to let your friend know how much in there to help them. And then lastly, to tell a trusted, trusted adult that you are worried about, about your friend. Like this program, like many of the three that I mentioned before, there are teaching tools that are presented through videos. So, they, they designed these programs so they can be instilled in schools very simply, quickly, um, cost, a cost-effective way, no cost in the school district, obviously. Um, but something that you could have a, you know, a turnkey system and it's up and running pretty quickly. So, those are the four, um, four components of the Know the Science Program from Sandy Hook Promise.
Can I ask some questions about the program?
Yeah, I think we can ask some questions about the program, Murphy.
I'll do my best to answer those.
I think you probably can answer this one.
Sure.
First of all, thank you so much and this sounds like a wonderful whole toolkit here. So, I'm excited that we're, we're thinking about incorporating it. Do they have different components of each program that are geared toward different age students?
They do. Um, something like the, the first one, Start With Hello, really would span the grade levels.
Right.
You know, as a school, you would just make the decision about gearing that towards the specific age groups. Whereas, um...
Right.
This one would be for, for the older students and, you know, in the school.
Middle-class schools.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you.
And, um, Suffolk County is, um, has asked the Suffolk County Superintendent to, all of us, step forward with the program together, so that, um, if a child migrates from one school to another, they're that much safer. So, we realize it'll, it's gonna take time to implement, but that we're gonna try and do it together so we can support each other, um, so that we can do trainings at each other's schools, um, and even though they provide at a discrete charge, there's always sometimes cost-related, so this will be kind of like a bit of a shared service for all of us. So, as many of us as can are gonna try and move forward with this program. You know, and slow and steady always wins the race. You know, and slow and steady always wins the race, so that we don't overburden the school, the school districts. But again, Suffolk County Police have asked us if we would do this and the next piece that Scott's gonna present on the Rave app. And we've heard the call. And this program was, of all the ones they had vetted, this was one of the multi-agencies, felt like this really spoke to children.
Yeah, I think this program is amazing, actually. And my only question for you, Ms. Malone, is as, as a principal, how do you, how do you see implementation going? Would you be comfortable with that?
I would, I would. Having, you know, from what I've read and having been at the workshop, like if I take that first, that first program, Start With Hello, I think it's something that a school could implement easily. I think here in St. Clair, where it, it matches, you know, our overall philosophy, it could fit in well and only enhance what we're doing. You know, as, as a, as a, maybe a high school principal, Mr. Nichols and, and his department would wanna take a closer look at perhaps some of these and see how they may interface with what's already going on. But as far as what Sandy Hook Promise presented, and as Katie mentioned, there were multiple superintendents present that day, and one spoke about just how accessible the, the group is to answering questions and guiding you through the process. So I think if you're looking for a program to enhance what you're doing, this, this is a great option.
Thank you.
We actually did put a slide in to compare the next slide. We, we were looking just at the middle school for what we already have that matches, and like the next steps. So we're really doing so much of what's already in, Start With Hello, so it would be just enhancing. I think the, the people that will just join at the table are, you know, our, our student council, our Red Ribbon Week, you know, student body getting their feedback on the grade levels.
Yeah, I think also, we have Ms. Consella here, and I wanna put you on the spot.
Yes, we do.
But do you think that the anonymous app is something that students would ever seriously think about using?
Um, I was just thinking about that. I think in regards to high schoolers, it's, it's probably something that we would be able to access. I don't, can't really speak to the use of it, just 'cause I don't know
Right.
what, like what people are seeing. But I believe there was a new policy in the middle school where they don't have access to cell phones, so I'm not really sure how that, so, 'cause that kind of excludes them from being able to participate in the, like acknowledgement, unless they're comfortable coming to an adult or a staff member.
I, I, no, I, that's a good point, that they would be excluded from reporting something at that time.
Yeah.
They would be able to do it later, when they're allowed to be using their phones, but, you know, a time-sensitive matter, maybe that's something we can talk about later on.
In terms of like accessibility, I think it's, I think it would, like, because we're young, and most of us always have our phones on, I would say would be something that would be helpful if that scenario ever came up.
This is just, do we know how that, that app works? I guess that's actually for Mr. Fisher, the anonymous reporting. Like when you send in an anonymous report, it goes directly to whom?
With, with this particular?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not sure.
Oh, oh, yeah, training.
But there, there is a connection to a group, I believe it's based out of Florida, so the information goes down to the center in Florida. And then from there, it could be disseminated maybe straight to a law enforcement agency, or directed, say, back to the school administration. This should be, this is something you should look into, kind of tomorrow, that type of thing.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thanks, yeah.
You are welcome. So it is, um...
That's next, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. I want to bring to your attention an app that is available for schools at this point. It's called the Rave Panic Button App. And as you can see up there, it's an emergency mobile app that's just now coming into Suffolk County. It's been in use in Nassau for some time now. It's actually been in all the public libraries in the area for quite some time. And it is now expanding into Suffolk County. So the county executive and the police department are standing strongly behind this. And it's a program that's being offered to school districts at no charge to us. So what it is, it's, it's a, it's preloaded application for the cell phone, so that we can notify law enforcement agents, agencies immediately in the case of an emergency. And they, based on the app and based on the location of where the app is triggered from, they will know some information about the, the location, because they'll be provided with that ahead of time, such as floor plans and things of that nature. I, I want to be very clear here. We were presented this. This was not something we went out and sought after. It is something we are looking at, but we're in the very early stages of looking at whether or not an app such as this makes sense for the Sag Harbor School District. The likelihood is that because all of the other districts appear to be going in that direction, we probably wanna follow suit, but we certainly wanna look into it a little bit more before we make that determination. The other thing to keep in mind is that this is not something that you roll out overnight. The one district in Suffolk that has started this program so far is Kings Park. I believe they were first brought onto the program back in July, and they're literally just going live with it now. So there is quite a bit of lead time up to it. So even if we were to make a determination at some point that we wanted to do this, it would take quite a while before we got to that point. And usually, we like to be upfront of things here in terms of technology, but this is definitely, we're gonna take a backseat, see how it rolls out, see if there are any issues with it, and make a determination from there. This is just a short video, gives a little bit of information about the product and about the project that appeared recently on a local news station. So I'm just gonna play that for you quickly, or not.
Could an app save lives in the event of a school shooting? Officials in Suffolk County hope so. They are now implemented and implementing this high-tech across all of its school districts.
I witness news reporter Kristin Thorndis live in Kings Park, we're born on this story. Kristin?
Well, Dave and Diana, they're offering it up to schools, so it is not required for schools to get this app, but Suffolk County officials hope that they all will. In the days following the school shooting in Parkland, Florida, school leaders in Suffolk County got together to talk about what else they could be doing to ensure school safety. So they've invested $2 million in making this Rave Panic Button mobile application available for free to all public school districts, colleges, and private schools.
We are not waiting on this issue here. We are going to do everything that we can in Suffolk County, in partnership with our schools, to keep our kids safe.
I think it's good, I think it's gonna help, and I'm excited to see it actually do some, do some, do something.
It works like this. If you activate Panic Button to report an active shooter on campus, the app will immediately connect you to 911 and send an emergency alert to all employees at the same time. The app is preloaded for first responders with critical information about a school.
That, you know, floor plans, entry and exit points, emergency contact information, who are the right people to be talking to.
It will be up to each school to decide who specifically will have access to the app. It's been used in Nassau County schools since 2016.
If students do not feel safe in our classroom, they cannot learn. If teachers and faculty do not feel safe in our classroom, they cannot educate our children.
The app has been used in all Suffolk County libraries over the last year, and part of the licensing agreement with Rave Mobile, Mobile Safety is that it could be used in hospitals as well, so that is something that we could be seeing down the...
Okay, so, again, just to reiterate, the reason we wait and see is 'cause there are a lot of questions that need to be answered, as we're pointing out in the report. Specifically, if we do go with this app, who would have access to it and in what situations would it be used? So there's, there's a lot of logistical issues that need to be worked out, so, again, I'd like to take the wait-and-see approach and, before we jump, jump on board with this. This is just a slide which all of you, if you saw the presentation already, you see, it's just linking the app and showing you that it can link key people with critical responses, such as 911. The next thing I just wanted to go over briefly, an email blast went out today regarding the community survey for the naming of the Sag Harbor Schools' homeless Delamaris Regional School property. Say that five times. The postcards came out the other last week. The survey actually went online probably Friday night before I went home from work, but the blast didn't go out until today, 'cause it wasn't really officially up over the weekend. It was, wasn't intended to be an official release until, till it went up. I wanted to have it up there for testing. I ran through it, I have to fill, ran through it a couple times over the weekend as well. So it is live, it is running through November 3rd, we could take it down. Since the email blast went out this afternoon, or earlier today, we've had about 74, 75 respondents so far. Keep you informed of, of how that goes.
Scott, can I make a suggestion?
Can we just start first? I wanna see if anyone has questions regarding the app. The only question I have about that app, and I'm sure there's some sort of thing about it, how do you prevent like butt diving? Like seriously, like how do you, is that like a lock?
I understand.
Are these just?
Right.
It just seems like such a bizarre, bad idea to me.
I, I don't know the specific of that. I do know that there are like some, some geo-fences that are put up, so that if, if we're intending to use it for here, but we step outside, you know, if I'm in another area, we push a button, I don't want them sending an emergency alert about Sag Harbor. So I know there's some guard, some built-in guards like that. I'm sure there's, it's not as easy as just simply pushing that button. There must be something else to do, which again, then how convenient is it, or how useful is it? I, I don't really know. We, we were just sort of run into the loop on this recently, haven't actually seen the app in, in place.
Scott, there are some alert systems similar to that, that when you, I don't know if that's how this works, but when you identify one of those, it then asks you to confirm on a different part of the screen, so like if you just accidentally touch it the same place, it wouldn't send you alert. So there...
There's probably some mechanism like that.
There's probably a mechanism like that.
Yep, I would think so as well.
Do we have more questions?
I, I, I was gonna leave a question about actually this, or when we talked about the alert. Just a suggestion, when the email blast went out, it was a picture of this. I didn't see an actual live link to the survey. You can click on the photo?
Picture right to the survey.
'Cause I, I, lots of people were suggesting that there be a link in the email, they didn't get it. Okay, that's good to know.
How many slots?
I don't know, I saw five or six people post. So I don't know.
We'll probably send it out again.
I was glad they even opened the email, right? That's like a victory.
We'll, we'll send it out, probably regularly, you know, once a week.
Seventy-five in a few days is amazing.
No, seventy-five in a few hours.
A few hours, that's incredible. That's great.
Yeah, because prior to that, it was just a handful. But the next, next time we, we send out the reminder, that's easy, we'll put a link underneath the picture, so that you can get it anyway. But yeah, the picture, if you click on it, will actually take you right to the...
And you do have them on, so, so that's, that's good.
And, Phil, you're up. Scott?
Well, good evening. And I don't know how I top all these wonderful presentations tonight, and I'll be, and, and what we're talking about already is the budget again, for 2019, '20. So I know that's hard to read, I'm really apologetic about that, so I handed out a hard topic to each of you, and I just wanted to review this with you and get your permission to go with this proposed budget workshop calendar. Made a few changes to it from what we had when I first started earlier in the year, just based on what we experienced and kind of learning that time and having a lot in the same night. So what I've decided to do is, you'll see that this year we're starting earlier with the budget, the first budget workshop would be on January the 14th. This present, the, the year we're in now, we actually started February 5th. And I feel like we started very late, part of it 'cause I had just come on board and we had to hurry up and get things going. And, and the other thing was that this year, we, we had seven presentations, and then this proposal, I'm proposing eight, so we can spread it out a little bit more. So January the 14th. The other thing that I wanted to mention, if you look at what we did last year, which is the year we're in now, the budget we're in now, I kind of moved things around a little bit to, to make light items together, so it's not maybe as chop, choppy when we do it this year, as perhaps what we experienced last year. So for the January 14th, first budget workshop, we're looking at, I, I wanna present the budgets on Board of Ed, Central Administration, Legal, Audit, Public Information Services. And then the next budget workshop would be two weeks later. And I like that two-week gap. If you remember, we, we were cranking, sometimes we were going one week after another, it was, it got a little bit hectic. So I think this might give us a little bit more space. So the second one, on January the 28th, we're looking at insurance, buildings and grounds, capital projects, and technology. And the other thing about this is that as we're presenting the current workshop, we're working on the next one, and I can meet with all the stakeholders and kind of get all the answers to the questions and, and make sure our numbers are in line, and, and we, and we go through the PowerPoint and everything works properly. So, again, it's on the timing. February the 11th, we'll do the next one, and we're, we're looking at revenue projections, the tax levy projection, use of appropriated fund balance projection, and we'll do transportation that night. March the 11th, which would be a month later, would be the tax levy limit, the impact. And we would also do the elementary school that night and special education. And on March the 25th, would be both these services, the middle school and the high school, athletics and employee benefits. And, and the other reason for some of these items coming in later, such as employee benefits, it, I wanna make sure that we get the information from the agencies that I need to get the information from, so it's as accurate as possible for what I present. And then on April the 1st would be debt service and transfers of other funds, and then a complete review of the entire budget. April the 16th would be the BOSI's vote, adopt, adoption of the 1920 operating budget for the May vote, the adoption of the property tax report card, so that May 13th, which would be hearing number eight, or workshop number eight, that would be our budget hearing. And then the budget vote is scheduled statewide for May 21st, 2019. And the only other question that I had for the board, for your deliberation, you'll see that I took the liberty of a 6:30 start, going from 6:30 to 7:30, and then the regular meeting would start at 7:30. And, and we do have eight sessions rather than seven, so I guess the question I have for the board is, do we keep these sessions at a 6:30 start, or do you wanna start a little bit earlier, at a 6 o'clock start, so that there's more time? And that's completely up to you, and, and you don't have to make a decision now, but I offer that up to you.
Thanks. I mean, if anyone has any thoughts on it.
Well, because we're covering, we're taking more meetings to cover the same content, theoretically, we'd need a little less time than we did this past year when we were, when we seen the board overloaded, so it seems like it would be enough time, but, you know, particularly if we can get the presentations up front, and then we can be more prepared with the questions.
That would also be my goal, to get, to get the, the final PowerPoint presentations to you as quickly as I can, so that you have them to review. If you have any questions, you can call me ahead of time, and I can research them.
Is it possible to post the presentations ahead of time to the public as well? 'Cause, you know, when those spreadsheets get on that screen, they can be hard to read, and, is that something you can do?
I, on board docs, there should be no reason why they aren't going out
So they'll be, they'll be posted?
to the public when we're discussing.
That's what I was asking, which is not just for the board, but?
Yeah, 'cause we have a whole different format now.
Right, so that'll be great.
So, yeah, we should do that. We'll see how it goes. We can do adjustments. We'll have the first one. We'll see how that goes, if we find we need to adjust the time, maybe we should talk about it then.
Sounds good.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Okay, oh, you're back.
No, no, I'm just...
Spreading news.
You can't make me.
Okay, well, at this point, then, we can move into the consent agenda. So can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda items 7.1 to 7.12?
So, okay.
Okay, let's just wait for the vote to pop up.
Well, did you want to say any discussion, or?
Oh, any discussion on those?
I just wanted to say how exciting...
I just wanted to say how exciting I thought it was to see Beau Reva appointed there for, to help with the play. I remember him on the stage, and he's a great kid. And it's just, I think it's really exciting when we can have Pearson alone come back and do a role like that. It's just great to see.
Likewise, I was excited to see all the trips that are coming up. It's fun.
Now you have students here, so you can ask them.
Is it safe?
I actually have, I have no information on any of these trips.
Hawaii.
Have you been on them though? Did you go to DC and-
Oh, yeah, I went to DC as an eighth grader, and I went to Hawaii as a sophomore. And I've, I've never felt unsafe or experienced anything bad. I've just never heard of any grade going to Boston or the YMCA.
Frost Valley is new, I think, isn't it, in the past few years?
He used to do it for you.
We used to do it a while ago, and Brandon is here again. Something bringing it back.
So my understanding is that you, the middle school's now doing one of these overnight trips for each class.
We're trying to do it for bonding for the year, which would be good for them, I think.
I think Southampton does Frost Valley. It's fairly highly-
West Hampton does it too.
West Hampton, yeah.
I had an eighth grade trip to Frost Valley, and it was pretty fun.
You're trying to get back there, aren't you?
I actually won a gift certificate for my family to go there for a weekend.
Okay, so moving on to our action items. Can I-
Hold on, everyone, you got to, everyone has to vote. They just got to read the vote.
Okay. Has everyone voted?
Oh, she has to read the last one. Well, she has to say if it's not unanimous, if it's not a-
Thank you. Thank you. It's a unanimous decision. Action item eight point one. Can I get a motion to appoint communications building representatives?
So move.
Second.
And discussion, please.
I had some questions regarding this. So when these positions were first created last spring, I think we voted on them in March, March twenty-sixth meeting of last year. I remember we had a discussion where we had, I believe, agreed that it wasn't just going to be rolling over, but that it was going to be a pilot program. And then we were going to reflect and discuss and reflect on what we thought the success of the program was, and then decide if we're going to move forward. But I don't know if we had that conversation. So it just seemed like it got back on the agenda. So that was kind of the first thing. And then the second was that this is retroactive for three months. And what confused me about that is if the position was posted in August, then how could, they had been doing it since the beginning of the school year? If it was posted in August, it would mean that people weren't doing it, and so you're posting it to try to fill those spots, right? So that's kind of what the conflict was. I didn't understand.
Well, it was definitely a mistake. It should have been on the reorg meeting. So that was a mistake absolutely made. It should have been on the reorg meeting, and I missed it. I simply missed the posting for it. And as for the discussion, I don't think we've really had the length of time to be able to really look back and reflect on how it's going because we didn't have the app yet. We, you know, as a superintendent, I can't tell you this is, this really hit the heart, the curve ball. It's the thing, it's the answer. Because we only started in March, so it couldn't evaluate something in March, April, May, June, and then start a new website. So the thinking was, it should, really should have been on the reorg meeting, and I missed it. You know, just like you, sometimes you miss a coaching appointment, or you miss something. I think it's so rare in Sag Harbor that we miss something. And I know, you know, there are school districts that only meet four times a year with their board meetings. So there is, so it's not unprecedented to have retroactive appointments. But this one should have been on the reorg meeting. So that was absolutely my, you know, the buck stops with me.
So had they been doing the job since the new year, the new school year started?
They never stopped doing the job.
So the posting was just kind of to get it posted, but they already had been doing the job for several months when it got posted?
Right. And the reason that, you know, I was reminded to do the posting was by our former district clerk, Mary Doncheck, who's very thorough and was like, what if there was someone out there that wanted this job? I was like, nobody wants this job. And she was like, but there could be, you know, you don't, you know. And it was really, it was very, I mean, there's negotiating units that might want that work. So she was, she, she, she was trained well. Yeah. And so she was the one that said, oh my gosh, we never posted. And I was like, ugh. So there's, you have two, two checks on my marks on that.
And did anybody come out of the woodwork and say they wanted it?
No, no, no.
There were a lot of them outside your office.
There isn't anybody that wants that work. Yeah.
I just had one more question regarding this, which is, had they been doing the job-
Chris, before you go, I just want to give one other person-
Okay, sure.
Does anyone else have any questions? Okay.
Have they, so were they working this whole time without getting paid? And now that we approved them, they're going to get paid for the job?
Yeah.
So for three months, they've been doing the job without getting any part of the stipend?
Right. We had a discussion about this maybe five minutes ago. And we all understand that, you know, retroactive appointments are not best practices. But I don't think it rises to the level of any sort of unethical behavior. I believe, no, no, no. I, this is just, I just want to make sure because, you know, it's a new program. I think we may have been short-sighted by enacting it in March and being like, we're going to reevaluate in June. I think that was a little short sight on our part. I think as a new program, and we should give it a year, and we can reevaluate it again on the June thirtieth sundown date. Again, I've added it to the organizational meeting list, which is growing because there's many things we're supposed to be doing at the organization meeting. And this is one of the items that may or may not be, if we decide to go forward with that.
Hold on, I assume they're trying to fix the fact that this one we haven't voted on yet, eight-one, and it's showing the vote from our previous-
Yeah.
Seven-one to seven-two. See that? Are you trying to figure out how to make so-
No, it's just, that's just the consent agenda. That's how it shows up, because that's the first one of the consent agendas.
Yeah, but it's about this-
It says eight-one, appoint free communication building representative. We haven't had this vote yet. It looks like the vote we had has gone through all of the items. You see that? And then eight-two, and she flipped ahead to eight-two also, it showed the same thing. So I wonder if there's somehow, this section is supposed to be a new vote?
It should be.
Yeah, I think it's supposed to be a new-
It was separate.
Right, it was, I think they're trying to fix it in the system so that it can come up as a vote, right?
The red docs go to-
Are you going to vote on eight-one?
I think you just leginate one, yeah.
Yes.
You have to.
I think you have to delete it and then start again.
I think I have to delete it.
Yeah. So while, while we-
So before you delete it, do we have the vote in for the consent agendas?
We already did that, didn't we?
I want to make sure she has that.
Yeah, I'm looking for it.
Because that's the consent.
Oh, I see the site, just to make sure it's up.
I don't see it.
There you go.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so let's go back to eight point one.
Eight point one.
And I believe you're going to have to delete that.
While we're waiting, there is, if you go on NISBA's website, there's a whole organization, it's a subset of NISBA, about effective school communications. They have tons of resources and best practices and all that that might be a resource for our teams to take a look at. One of the things they strongly suggest is surveying your different constituencies during the course of the year to take the temperature on how you're doing in communication. We used to do that when we stopped. So I would, and we don't have a communications committee anymore, or we suggested to them. So now that we kind of have a team on this, I would, I would urge us to take our, take those temperatures. So we really do understand-
What do you mean, like email surveys out?
Yeah, we, we, seven years ago, we did it. But just to say, you know, is this working for you? Is it not? Are there ways you want to hear from us differently, whatever? But, you know, it's easy to be in a bubble. But if you do communications for a living, you realize that the worst thing to do is assume that you know how everybody feels about how you're communicating. In some schools, actually, they survey the students about what they think of their experience, literally about teachers, classes, everything. I've seen some of those. They've been shared sort of from other schools in the context of our work. I, I mean, I don't know if there's other issues and union issues related to that, but I think it would be amazing to hear from the kids each year about how they're feeling about stuff. And I don't know, it's part of the communication.
No, that's, that's, that's a good idea. I think we're going to do eight point one. We're going to do it by hand, by roll call? No, by hand. So all those in favor of appointing, oh, I'm sorry, all those in favor of the communication building stipend positions appointment, say aye.
Well, you need to have, have somebody call for a-
We did.
Oh, you did? Oh, you got a second? Oh, okay, sorry. I didn't hear that.
Yeah, we got a first and second. We just need to vote.
Is that language what it's supposed to say?
No, it's not. No, it's not.
No, they can't figure out how to fix that.
So maybe, maybe we should read the resolution before we vote on it, so people know what we're voting on. Other vote. That be it resolved?
Okay, be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the following appointments to the position of Communication Building Representatives effective July one, two thousand eighteen through June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, at the stipend amount of four thousand annual stipend. Barbara Cohen as the Sag Harbor Elementary School Communication Representative, Mary McGlocklin as the Pearson Middle School Communication Building Representative, and Jean DeSanti as the Pearson High School Communication Building Representative.
Thank you. All those in favor, raise your hand for aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstained? Okay, it's a unanimous vote. Moving on to action item eight point two. Approve the superintendence of school's salary increase. Can I get a motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. And discussion?
Based, based on the language of the contract, there's part of our annual evaluation that still is not complete. So if we're going to proceed with this, I strongly urge us, since it's so late as it is, to make sure it gets completed.
I agree with you. And I reviewed the contract. And I did, there's some clarification on this contract clause, which I wish I caught that when we were in negotiations. You're talking about-
Do we want to go through, do we go through the nitty-gritty of it publicly or not?
What?
No, we're just talking about the contract.
Oh, the contract's public, yeah.
And you were talking about-
Page, bottom of page eight, top of page nine.
Section B.
Right.
Okay, I'll read it out loud. The superintendent shall prepare a written list of goals and objectives for the school year. Such list shall be prepared and delivered to the board on or before November, after this agreement is to be July fifteenth for each year. The list shall set forth in detail the explanation of how the superintendent plans on achieving the goals and objectives, as well as dates which such goals and objectives, is that the paragraph you're referring to?
Yeah, and when it was originally designed, it wasn't the district's goals and objectives. It was goals and objectives specific to the superintendent. It's kind of standard language that is in previous ones.
This, to me, as I read it, is our goals that we have approved. So if we want to discuss this with the attorneys, I suggest we do that during exact-
Maybe this board will interpret it differently than when it was originally created. That could be the case. When it was originally created, there were separate goals of the superintendent that were separate from the school district. And it has been that way for, it was that way for some time. I have, I have, I have copies of the older ones, but we can talk, we can talk about it offline. I'm not suggesting that we delay this. I just am raising it because, at least from my perspective, that, that obligation hadn't been met from either party.
Yeah, I, I'm going to respectfully disagree with you, just because the way I read this contract, which is the superseding contract, and this is the contract that we're using, it looks to me like the district goals. So if this is something that we are interested in changing, maybe we can discuss with the attorneys and exec and move forward from there.
We'll check with them, because I don't think this, I'm interpreting it differently. And it had been executed differently when it was first executed. So, but I can bring those supporting documents when we sit and talk with the attorney.
Right.
So like the first year, there was a separate document about it that had nothing to do with the district goals.
But this is superseding all that.
No, it was when this was executed. It's attached to this. It was after this was created. There were goals that were specific, that were created, agreed upon between the superintendent and board, that were specific to the superintendent and not directly attached to the district goals. But it may be easier if I show you what that document looks like because, and clear, but again, I don't think that's a point of discussion for here. I was simply raising it because from my perspective, it was an obligation not met. I'm not suggesting we don't vote on this. I'm teeing it up because I teed it up months ago, and I just felt we didn't get any resolution on it. That's all.
Alex.
I don't understand what the point of all this is, but I think if we have a question about interpreting a contract, we should ask our attorney about that.
Okay. So are we able-
Can we vote online yet, or should we vote offline?
You can vote, yes. That'll change it. It's already-
But the vote doesn't come up on our computers.
Yeah.
The motion is to approve the superintendent's salary increase.
And who made the motion?
I did.
Okay.
And I second it.
Okay.
We're going to vote by hand again, or?
There you go.
It should become a-
I think it's on there.
Oh.
Oh, there you go.
Wow, look at that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to policy, we have the sexual harassment prevention policy. As you recall, the laws and statutes were amended. So this is the first read of the policy. I'm requesting that the board review this policy in conjunction with the model policy sent by our attorneys, and provide us with any feedback before the next, before the second reading on ten twenty-nine, so we can go forward and adopt this policy.
Is this the same thing that we received earlier this week?
Yes.
Was it this policy? Remember, what, working made comments that there were some things that existed in an old one, and it wasn't going to be in this, then it would have been modified. Was it this policy?
No, 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 no.
That was the conflict in the first one. Yes, thank you.
But we should also have this attached to. It's not on here.
The draft?
It is online.
It's online?
It's not online. What's that?
It's on executive content.
Oh, but I think it should be available.
Oh, here it is. Yeah, sorry. When you scroll down.
It's under the fold. You have to scroll down on the page.
Yeah.
All right. I'll make a note that by tomorrow, it'll be marked as public.
Should be public. Can I just, can you all just give, provide sort of clarifying, just for the purpose of the public? I mean, I know it was sent when you all forwarded this stuff from the attorney, but just what happened to mean that we have to update this kind of thing? Like just a little context for people?
I don't know the specifics, except for that the law changed.
Okay.
So our policy. Alex.
I mean, I think the law change is that effective next week or something. Any, every employer of any size in the state of New York has to adopt sexual harassment policy and then provide training to all its employees. That's my understanding. So I think that this is, that this, whatever we had before had to be redone to comply with the new law.
All right. So everybody will review our draft along with the model policy, and then we can discuss it at the October twenty-ninth meeting.
Just to note, if we are going to vote on it then, it is highlighted that we have to put people's names in here, and they haven't been put in yet. So, so we just want to put them in, so when we vote on it next time, it's actually in there.
Absolutely. Okay, moving on to committees. So I believe that the committees have been finalized, the new charters have been drafted and approved by the committee chairs. It's my understanding that-
No, that's not how it works.
No, no, they're just drafting. They, they-
The chairs have it.
No, they, they'll, they'll meet with their committees after you actually send the, the committee members their letters.
Oh, okay.
So those will come from you, and then they'll, they'll start up their committees. I'm the only committee that meets year round.
And the committee comments on the, the, but charter, but it has to be approved by the board.
Right.
So the chairman doesn't do it on their own. They do it with the committee.
Oh, okay. So at the first meeting of each committee, the chair people should be having their members review and adopt those policies.
In fact, a lot of times, what they can do is they email it ahead of time, so they're not spending the whole first meeting going through it. But they can get feedback ahead of time, and then just vote on it then, and then it can come to us early in the year.
Okay.
Otherwise, it can, it's already late to start.
Okay, just raised two little things. One is I sent you an email earlier today about one of them. And I just, you know, I don't know if other people caught this and whether they think it's an issue. But there is one parent who is on both the middle school shared decision-making and the high school shared decision-making. And it just seemed to me that maybe that parent should be on one, not the other, not both. And then a different parent on one of the other ones, just, just because of the type of committee that is. It just seemed to me. And then the other thing is, and maybe tonight's, that the night, but I want- And then the other thing is, and maybe tonight's not the night, but I wonder if we shouldn't revisit putting a communications committee back into place. Because it just seems there's a lot of stuff comes up, communications and measurement and how we're doing it and what have you. And so I wonder if that's not worthwhile, just revisiting whether, you know, we put a small committee back together.
Divisive ad hoc?
Yeah.
I'm not one to pick battles, but I was the only one who voted to keep it, but.
I chose, no, I voted to keep it.
It was you, but whatever. I'm going to put that on for the next agenda, so that we can discuss that more fully. I think that might be helpful also, because I believe there will be more of a communications plan when Victoria gets here. So that would be a good conversation to have in conjunction with that. Also, for the diversity committee, we are still hoping for your charters. I don't know if you've met and been able to do that.
We have not yet.
Okay, because I would love to be able to approve you guys by the twenty-nine.
Bobby Cohen has constructed a framework for it. But I think the committee, her committee really needs to weigh in on the, like the why. So once a committee can come together, they're going to, as a, they'll have to be a subcommittee, and when they come together to reflect on the charter.
Continue as.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can continue as an, as a, as an ad hoc committee. And then once we're able to review the standing committee charter, then you guys will become a standing committee.
Okay.
But we can't approve that until we actually have the charter.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for committees?
Uh, just one, which is, once we approve tonight, can the chairman or whoever's supporting the chairman reach out to the members to try to identify when the first meeting is and we can get the ball rolling, just because we're kind of late starting the meetings?
Yeah, I'll, I can work on that tomorrow when I do these letters.
Yeah.
And we'll find out the first dates and get them going.
Well, no, the chair, no, the chairman reaches, usually the chairman reaches out to the committee members and they coordinate what works for them.
Right, but you want to know when the first date is.
But each, each committee will come up with that.
But according to all of the charters, it's the board president that sends them, you are on the committee.
Well, then, no, but not when the first meeting is.
Right, but they, some of them, some of them are large, like there's just more membership than there isn't. So they're going to, we're going to have to send invitations out and they could be talking to people that aren't going to be on the committee.
Yeah.
So that's. I don't want to put anybody in that precarious position, so. So let's say twenty-five people want to be on a specific committee, we've had this in the past. The board president will contact them and say, you know, we have a robust number of people, but P. D. Graves and Allison would love to have someone to join her committee, so, because, and people usually just want to help, so.
Oh, I thought this was the list of who's on the committees, I'm confused.
No, I thought you were, sorry, point of clarification, I thought you were asking for the first date of the meetings.
I what, what I was saying, what I was saying is, and maybe it's different now, but it used to be that the chairmans would reach out to everyone on their list and try to coordinate the first meeting. I was simply saying, I hope that happens soon, because it's already October, that was it.
Oh, okay.
But I thought you were saying you were going to be reaching out to set up the first meetings, but it's really the chairman that would do it with their own committee.
Right, but some of these committees have, we have too many members. We're going to, the board president and I will have to sit and have some reflection about that, because they don't apply to the charters. So what else, we're going to have to change the charters and make more people want to be on.
We're not changing the charters.
I just wanted to do sort of, I don't know if this is a point of order thing, but if you all recall, we all shifted these to be more year round and a number of these committees have been ongoingly meeting. I mean, right, Wellness, you already sent stuff out, Safe has continued to meet, Diversity, I believe, has continued to.
Well, Safe, we only have to deal with the liaison, we don't have the groupings.
So this is not held up, this is not held up the activity of a number of these committees, is all the same.
Which is great. That's great.
Which is good, right, because that's what we, this board did last year, we, um, but fixed that, right?
We did, but unfortunately it may not have made it into the actual charter, so we've been cleaning up so they can review their charters.
I thought that was all done.
I thought we've gotten that and did that.
We did, we, we voted on it. Are there any more questions on committees? Okay, if there's no more questions on committees. Before we go into executive session, I just want to see if there's anyone here for public input two. No one's here for public input two? Okay, well, yes.
Can I make a public input then? It is, we haven't said it as a board since the homecoming, just how amazing it was in terms of the people and a couple of people responsible for that are here tonight. And so it was just such a fabulous event and little, you know, kudos to the PTSA and Nancy and Eric and.
Lots of hours and administrators.
Yeah, so anyway, I just, I don't know, we might want to say that.
No, that's great, congratulations on, on homecoming.
All right, we see.
Before we break, can I ask the superintendent of, just a quick question?
Uh, I'm sorry, hold on a second.
Okay.
Nope.
Just an update, a second.
Yep, just an update.
I was just curious, we have a couple of new bus stops in the village this year, because we expanded our bus coverage. I was curious how that was going.
I can tell you how that's going.
Okay, so superintendent, thank you, January.
There are some very, very, I got, I got two big hugs from people that I don't know all that well. And one, one of the parents that came and spoke, as a matter of fact, came up to me and just said he, you know, he said, I can't thank you enough and it's changed his entire life, his entire life, because he, he had the, well, he has, he has two, he is, he works nights, his wife works days and he had to walk that mile. And now the bus, he can just walk to the bus stop with his infant, his like three-year-old and put his now first grader on the bus. And he's like, and then if we want, I can walk to morning program, because I'm only trying to handle two of them.
Right.
But trying to handle three of them was, he said, it's just changed everything and it's so much safer for them, so.
That's really good.
And it didn't change our, you know, busing times or anything like that.
So stopping in the village really didn't have a big impact on, and that's great, congratulations.
We can ask Mr. Malone if my daughter's tardiness has gone down, which is usually about, I don't know, maybe twenty months. It's gone down a lot. She's on that bus at seven fifty.
We should not be talking about it.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Can I get a motion, is anyone here for public input two? No. Can I get a motion to convene into executive session to discuss the extension of the superintendent's contract and I believe another.
Transportation negotiation.
Transportation negotiations and a, and that's it.
So moved, second.
I'm waiting for the pop up.
Oh, they got the pop up, yeah.
And I'm going to say thank you to our administrators, have a great evening, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The vote is up, everybody, please enter your. Make sure, wait till she later. Thank you, it's unanimous and targeting exact that, it's seventeen, yeah.